Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Pennfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting is going to be held virtually or remotely due to order of Governor Cuomo because of the COVID pandemic. People will have an opportunity to present to the board virtually, and also citizens will be able to comment via telephone by calling 585-340-8771, or electronically through the town's website of www.pennfield.org. We will have our starting work session tonight where we'll tend to some typical routine business, shall we say, and then we will go, I believe, we're going to go right into our public hearings. We have two applications tonight. As I said, the applicants will present their case to the board. We will then have questions, and board members will have questions, and then we'll open it up to any comments from the public. We always like to point out that we think the town does a very good job of informing its citizens that the applications are going to be heard, and the town does this so citizens feel welcome to come in and give their opinion on the applications. The town does this by posting the agenda on the website and here at Town Hall, by sending postcards to neighbors if you live or reside, work within a certain distance, I guess, if you have a business, I should say, property within a certain distance of the application. And then also, the town requires that the applicant posts signs on the property so folks can see that something is going to be heard on the application. So with that, in case I missed anything, I don't think I did, I'll ask everyone to rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm having a little trouble pulling up the drive here, so. Oh, let's see, give me one more minute, but I think we can, typically, we start with the minutes from last month. We've had them distributed. Anybody have any comments on those? If not, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve as written?
Second.
Okay, a motion to approve the minutes for a mandamus, a second by Marie. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Then let's move to the, tonight's, we don't have any table applications, do we? I can't follow my agenda, unfortunately.
No.
So let's move to tonight's applications. We have two, both pretty straightforward, but let's take the, I'm not sure of the order of them, so let's take Chipotle. Anybody have any questions for clarification on that? I did initially, I communicated with Andy. I almost said spoke, but I think it was, well, I guess we talked on the phone. But I was wondering whether this was a, the proposals for a true drive-through, and it's not in the sense of ordinary, typical drive-throughs, it's the modern one, and that is, you order online, you order on your phone, and you're just picking it up. I guess that might be, so that was sort of, that was a good point of clarification for me. Anybody have any other questions on that application?
No.
The old property that went, what was the bank, that only had the variance, the area variances for the setbacks, not for parking, correct? As far as you know?
As far as I know, yeah.
All right, and then the second application, I think, is also, yeah, the church on 250 there, anybody have any questions about that one?
I do. So if it's an electronic sign that they can't have moving or flashing letters, so it's just electronic, and they can change what it says, like at night or something like that, is that allowable per the code?
Well, the code, the section I was referring to in bringing this application up was the code, it doesn't allow any moving or flashing lights.
So it's not, it's not the electronic part, it's just the moving and the flashing?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, on the way here, I drove down east on Browncroft or Atlantic, whatever it's called, and I did pass the church, which is on the north side.
Browncroft?
In, well, further east, it's in between Scribner and Five Mile.
Roger, it's a Christian Reformed.
There you go. And it did have, it probably was repeating, but alternating messages, let's say. I didn't see that it was scrolling.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know if that is sort of what your question is or not. It said, "Church on Sundays," and then maybe eight, 10 seconds later, it said, "Church on Saturdays, too." You know, there were messages, but it wasn't a scroll, and it wasn't flashing.
The fire department, the Pennfield Fire Department has an electronic sign, and it's, sometimes it's moving, but most of the time, it's just one message that happens to change. So I was just wondering, like, what, like, what is moving?
It's a good question.
... about illuminating sign or lighting devices provided they only employ lights emitting a light of constant intensity, and no sign should be illuminated by or contained flashing or moving lights or light.
Mike, would you mind repeating that?
It says, "Illuminated sign or lighting devices may be permitted, provided such signs employ only lights emitting a light of constant intensity, and no sign shall be illuminated by or contained flashing or moving lights or light."
So I'm hearing that to mean the message can change, as long as it's not...
Like it's not a ticker?
Yeah, 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 yes.
I had another question, too, which is, I didn't see a rendering in that, in that application. Did I totally miss it?
Yeah, I didn't see it.
It's kind of hidden in there, actually, if you go into the sign permit.
Okay.
I think there's a, there's a rendering of it in there.
Thank you.
There was, I don't know if that was a photo or a drawing, but there's definitely something in there. But not your typical rendering from the designer, you know, that's, that's not how I looked at it.
It's just, I kind of wanted to just see it that way.
There's, there's one other section that Mike wrote in that C. It says, "Accept this may be permitted by this article or any other provision of this chapter, use a pen, pen, or spinner, streamers, moving signs, or flashing, delivery, or reflective, animated, or rotating signs, or similar eye-catching devices."
Eye-catching. Isn't the sign supposed to be eye-catching?
That's a catch-all.
One would think that's the definition of a necessity.
Yeah, well, you know, we may have to flesh that out a little bit, honestly, but, okay.
That's all I have for that one.
Any other, anybody have any other questions on that? Okay. Let me see if my agenda is finally coming up. It is not. Sometimes the old-fashioned way works better, you know?
You know, these ones, you have to remember to update them, and I forgot to send you guys an email to tell you to update them before you come.
Oh, the computers?
Yeah.
No, I, it was all plugged in and everything on, last night, and mine was, I don't know. Okay, so I guess we have the clarification, so...
The sign is number one, the...
Yeah, okay, I just came up. So may we have the first application, please? Andy?
Sure. Daniel Sofie, Danwins LLC, 2186 Empire Boulevard, Webster, New York, 14580. On behalf of Southeast Bible Baptist Church, request a special permit under Section 250-10.3-A of the Code to allow a freestanding sign with an electronic message reader board, which is not permitted under Section 250-10.11-A of the Code at 1850 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. The property is currently or formerly owned by Southeast Bible Baptist Church Incorporated and is zoned MUD, SBL number 125.01-2-59, and this is application number 21Z-0003.
All right.
Before we get started, can you ask the applicant to turn his camera on, please?
Sure. If we may have the applicant turn camera on there, I think we go. Okay, we're all set.
About having him turn his microphone.
So joining me today, as well as a representative of Southeast Bible Baptist Church, I believe he is also in this meeting, his name is Bill Lyle, he did text me that he is in the meeting as well.
Yeah, we're just admitting him, I'm sorry about that.
No problem.
It looks like Mr. Lyle may have to turn his camera on as well.
Okay, Mr. Lyle, if you could turn your camera on, we'd appreciate that. All right, well, why don't we proceed and, do we have indication that he's here?
There is.
All right, good, there we go. Thank you. Okay, whoever's going to present the application, please proceed.
I'll start, and then I'll hand it off to Bill.
Sounds good.
So basically, the rendering that you have on the screen is essentially what we're getting, or trying to get an application for. I've been in contact with Andy Suwajiz, I believe I'm pronouncing his name correctly, and essentially, what we're getting the zoning permit for is for the digital nature of the sign, and also just for the sign itself, however, the variance is for the digital nature. We did have a site survey done at the request of the town of Pennfield. We're intending to keep the sign within the code for the setback, so we don't need a variance for how close it is to the road, which I believe is 20 feet, and I have to double-check my email there with Andy, but we did get a survey to ensure that we know where we can put that and still stay within that code. So essentially, that's what we're trying to do. I guess I would turn it over to you guys for questions, and, you know, what things can be answered for you to help make it more clear or satisfying the objections?
I got a question with regard to the size. You have agreed to reduce the size slightly from what's shown on your other slide. My understanding was the two feet, four inches?
Yeah, I believe it's only just a, just a few inches that we would have to change it. I believe, I think it was the vertical distance to get the total square footage below, but yes, we are not intending to get a variance for the size, we want to keep that within what's allowed by the town code.
All right, are the colors going to be basically what's shown there, red on white, and then red on black for the digital portion?
The digital sign that we're intending to buy, should this permit be approved, is capable of displaying, I think, like, 256 colors, but, you know, to your point earlier in the pre-discussion, you guys were talking, asking questions, you know, obviously, we don't intend to flash anything or have moving graphics, but we will be capable of displaying text in any color, essentially.
So what you're saying is, you're going to put signs up at various times, but you're leaving the sign, one particular set of letters, up?
Yeah, that's what's been relayed to me by the church, that they essentially intend to create a message and leave it there for a significant length of time, much longer than it would take a car to drive down the road, for example, so that cars that drive by will see only one message.
And practically, how far back is this sign on the road, and where's it going to be located?
If you go to the survey drawing, and if you zoom way up, and remember the entrance is to the parking lot, it's kind of where you want to be. So the, if you see that circle, that yellow island right there, exactly, if you go north, or just if you go to the top, I guess technically, that would be west, to that very first red line, yeah, right there, so that line at the corner where it says 29.2, that corner is 29.2 feet from the road, so essentially, we would just need to make sure that the sign is within 9.2 feet of that corner, and we will meet the 20-foot setback. You can see that there's a 20-foot setback line noted on the drawing as well, so essentially, it could go anywhere. I guess the church was considering that spot by the circle as maybe the primary location, and maybe as a secondary location further to the north as also a possibility, and that may need, the reason for that other location would be just to make it easier to run power to the sign connected to the building.
Would you address what impact, if any, the pine trees to the south are going to have on visibility to that sign?
The pine trees will obviously have some impact. The lower branches can be trimmed and already are to some degree, so I don't think that will be a serious issue, but, you know, it's, I guess, the, you know, if we were concerned about that, we would probably favor the position in the yard versus right by the road.
So a couple of notes on that. Locating the sign by the entrance would alleviate some feedback that we've received from guests previously, where it's been more difficult than they would expect to find the entrance to the, to the property. So locating it by the entrance there would be preferable from the standpoint of guests coming to visit the property, such as during voting, when we serve as a polling station, or for our food pantry.
Can we find out where Mr. Lyle is from?
Uh, Miss, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I live in Webster. I've been a member of Southeast since 2000, and I've been the treasurer for a little more than 12 years now.
She actually meant your address, right, for the record, is that what you're asking?
Who he was representing. I didn't realize he was with the church.
Oh, yeah.
That's fine.
So we'll just list the church's address for that. He's here as a representative of the church.
Can you address one of the requirements that we would keep applying to the purpose, and that's, can the society adequately, can the society of the sign adequately identify your business? You've got a big building here, and you've got a very, very large building on it, so I think you could do that, as in your business.
So in addition to showing the location of the entrance, this sign would be consistent with other signs in the area, such as YMCA, which has a lighted sign at their entrance, and also has multiple building signs. The other advantage of this, specifically to the digital aspect of this, is it would allow us to provide static content on upcoming events, services of the church, such as, again, having the food pantry open, or as, or open as a polling place.
Will this be rather identification of services rather than business?
It would be both, yes. In the image, I believe we've got the church name listed above the digital portion of the sign.
So you could, you could do that with a directional sign. You don't need a digital sign to identify the church.
To identify the church, no, but to be able to provide updated status on services and times, that would be beneficial.
And you feel that people that are driving by at the speed limit of 50 miles an hour are going to be able to see that, on a 2x6 foot sign?
Yes, we do. We took a look, I understand there was some feedback related to electronic signs and a concern about safety. We did some research. Texas A&amp;M Department of Civil Engineering conducted a study in 2012 of electronic signs and their relationship to traffic safety, and they found no correlation between traffic safety and the presence of electronic signs at businesses. So from that aspect, we're not concerned of it providing a safety risk to the town, to people driving by. We do feel it would make the building more visible, the entrance more visible, and would help people as they approach a building from that aspect, again, and providing additional information to residents and guests as they pass the church, as to our services.
Are you aware that we did receive an email, closing this application, or a blue letter, have you seen that?
Yes, I did. I would like to address some of the concerns.
Sure.
One of the first ones I spoke to already was the concern about traffic safety. Second concern was control of messaging on the sign. I would state that the Christian Reform Church up on Atlantic Ave has a similar sign to the one that we're proposing, and that issue exists even with analog signs, such as the one that exists at McDonald's at 250 and 441, where business owners would have the ability to update those signs. Certainly, it's not our intent to post anything controversial or provocative, we're looking to display factual information about our services and times. There was a setback concern noted in that email. Looking at the application, we are within the standard setback per town code, and the proposed location for our sign would fall between the location at the Christian Reform Church, which is setback a little further, and the location of the sign at the Pennfield Fire Hall, which is closer to the road than our proposed location. Related to the number of signs on the property, the wedge-shaped sign that is just to the north of the building there was recently damaged and has been removed. We understand that we did not address removal of other signs in the application, so the reflective sign shown there to the left has been removed as of last night due to damage that it had incurred, and out of, you know, acknowledgement that, you know, we can reduce that signage as we look to install a new sign here.
What about the, excuse me, the banner sign, with the name of the church?
So we don't currently have a plan to remove that. Again, that's provided some additional information on specific events periodically, though certainly, we're open to discussing that if that's an issue. Ideally, we would like to keep that, we use that for youth group, for VBS, for a couple of items like that.
But that is not even compliance with code, you need a permit for a banner.
Okay, and we would certainly look forward to working with the town to either bring that into compliance through permitting or removal as needed.
Would you accept a condition of removal as a condition of frankiness, application?
Yes, I believe we would.
All right, that's all I have.
All right, the, one of the emails, or one paragraph in the email says there are five signs currently on that, on the property. How many are there? You agree with that, that there are five?
So I was thinking of the gable end and the banner as one sign. The church service sign shown a moment ago there is consistent with business hour signs that exist on other locations.
I think that sign, too, Bill, is not really intended to be read from the road, that's more or less for people as they enter the building, it's quite small.
The question, Andy, that you actually have approval for that, it was a while ago, but I think you have approval for the hour sign plus the main sign on the building.
I'm sure that one is, that particular sign that we're looking at there has been there, I think, as long as I've come to the church, so, since at least December of 99. The other sign that was mentioned is a sandwich sign that's by the entrance currently, that's associated with a clothing drop-off shed that's located on the property, which is used by many town residents to drop off unwanted clothing items. That's not directly associated with the church.
And when voting is occurring, are there signs that are placed up there to indicate it's a polling site?
Unfortunately, I don't recall. I believe there are signs that get placed there, but...
Andy, do we know that, and if so, is that a requirement of the Board of Elections?
I believe it is, yes.
Yeah, I thought it was as well.
There would be signage.
Not much we can do about that. All right, so I just want to understand, the sign that we're looking at there that says church services, Mike, you, that was approved before, so that's staying, and if we can go back to the sign above the banner? I think, I think, sir, you said you, you've kind of considered that one sign, is that what you, what you meant when you said that before?
Yeah, if, if the banner is out of compliance with town code, we would certainly look to bring that into compliance.
Yeah, I mean, that, that would be a condition that if the banner is allowable with permission, then, you know, you'd have to come in and comply with the requests for that. The other sign has been knocked down due to damage. Is there, is there another one on the, is there one on the south side, or is that the church service one?
The church service one is the one on the south side, you can see it on the far gable end, right there.
Yeah, okay, so, but there's not a sign on the facade which actually faces south?
No, there is not.
Okay.
Dan, we got a copy of a sign from it, from the 84th.
Yeah, no, I, I thought that's what you referred to when you said it was permitted before, which is fine. So it sounds like the ones that will stay regardless are the lettering sign, yep, and then the permitted church service sign. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Can I have one other clarification?
Yeah.
Also, on that permitted, one 2x10 freestanding single-place sign, I assume that you would, if we were to approve your application, agree that that would not be constructed at any time in the future?
Okay, I'm not familiar with that, but I, I'm not aware of any plans to put up additional signs at this point.
Is there a time limit on that? There was a sign that was previously approved, but apparently never, never constructed.
Okay.
Is there a time limit, Andy, on that, or is...
Uh, I think there might be, I think there might be a year time limit, so...
It's typical with a building permit, right?
Right.
Okay, well, in any event, I think Mike asked you the question whether you'd be, if that still, under some theory, would be allowable, it would be a condition, I would imagine, that you waive any rights you have to construct that sign.
Absolutely.
All right, that, again, I want to revisit the issue that we kind of talked about at work session here, with exactly what does the statute prohibit? We're, we're here, is the only actual reason we're here because of the electronic nature of, of this? No setback issues?
That's where I was led to clean.
Other than that, the sign is in compliance with all the other requirements.
Okay, so let's, let's talk about why... So let's talk about why we think that violates the code. And Andy, you're the officer that sort of put this matter, not to put you on the spot, but I guess I'm putting you on the spot. Why does that, when it's not scrolling and it's giving a message for whatever time period, 30 seconds, 45 seconds, I don't know if you have an answer to that question, either one of you. You know how long a message will be displayed? I imagine you can control that.
Yes, it would certainly, I guess, what I've been led to believe, and Bill can confirm this, is that the messages would be left there much longer than it would take a car to drive past the church within visibility for either side, so there wouldn't be any changes within a minute, even more than that.
All right. And do you have any idea how many different messages you would run during the same day, week, or whatever, if you know what I'm saying? Three different messages, four different messages that would alternate?
I would definitely expect less than four messages in a day. We haven't got that defined specifically.
What would be your busiest time of year that you would want to post messages? Around the holidays, summer? What's your, I'm trying to get you a little bit more specific. What events do you have that you'd want to list up there?
So we have a VBS in the summer. Weekly, we have our regular services on Sundays and Wednesday. We have a youth group on Friday. Food pantry is open on Sundays between services. So for Sundays, you might see a morning and evening service and potentially food pantry times. So that would be three messages for a typical Sunday, potentially.
And then any special events on top of that?
Yeah, any special events, which would be very periodic.
I think you guys do a Christmas program every year as well, too, which is free to the community.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
You're kind of on a slippery slope there. I understand what we need to do. It's just, are you going to use this, for instance, to have three different sets of signs that rotate every couple minutes? Or are you going to leave one sign up for two hours, the next one for two hours, the next one for two hours?
I guess I would let Bill address that as a representative of the church there.
We don't have anything defined currently, but we're certainly open to recommendation on that.
And Mike, are you trying to get to the point of flashing and moving versus static? Trying to establish that?
Yeah, I mean, once something becomes flashy, if you're looking at it when it changes, it's flashy. It happens every minute. I think that's not what the code has in mind for this.
I would agree with that.
Well, I don't know if I agree with that. I guess, I'm thinking of a, when we're driving our cars and we see a flashing yellow signal, that's something that's intermittent.
It's also just moving.
And I consider that to be scrolling. I mean, these are all good questions, and...
So in my experience, the Webster Fire Hall has a colored digital sign, and they display a number of messages on there that cycle through pretty rapidly.
Yeah, they didn't come before this board, just so you know.
Yep.
For whatever reason.
I'm not personally a fan of that, because I do find that to be distracting when you're scrolling messages in from aside, when you've got images moving around on the screen. I personally find that to be distracting, and that's not what we're looking to accomplish with our sign. Hopefully, that helps from a clarity perspective.
I think that, I think you've made that clear. I think what we're struggling with a little bit now is we all know that the language will change. We're just not quite sure how often it will change, or how many different messages you will be running.
Per day.
Per day, per time period, obviously not simultaneously, but how many will you be alternating through? I guess we can control that by saying we're going to limit it to four, or we're going to limit it to five. It seems like you're going to have three typically throughout the year.
Yeah.
Maybe four, and then some special events.
Yeah.
All right.
I would say that's accurate.
Go ahead, Marie.
Is there a specifics, so one of the things that I liked about the Rochester Christian Reform sign, though, was that the print was much larger than the digital. It was very compact, whereas this is more digital than Southeast Bible Baptist, more print. Do you need that much space? Would you be able to work with less digital space?
The manufacturer that makes the digital signs does not have, like, every available form factor and screen ratio. The one that we expressed interest in purchasing fits that section there. I'm sure it's possible to re-engineer what we're hoping to build to make it different.
Yeah.
But it would be difficult to resource that screen at this point, so that's partly why we're doing that. But yeah, I don't know if that helps you at all, but there's some engineering aspects to that as well. It's harder to find odd screen size ratios.
So that's a standard size?
Correct, yes.
Does any board member have any further questions? Mike?
You're on mute.
You're on mute, Mike. Well, while you're, oh, I was just going to remind the, hold on a second, Mike, because I forgot to talk about the public. If any members of the public have a comment that they want to voice via telephone, please call 340-8771, or electronically through the website, which I don't see any yet, at pennfield.org. So, go ahead, Mike, I'm sorry.
Would it be possible, and this is your suggestion, to have a minimum amount of time for any given sign? I mean, it sounds like if you're doing something that happens in an event or a series event, things are happening during the day. I'm just wondering if you would be willing to consider something like, it has to be up for an hour before the next sign comes up?
We certainly would be willing to consider an interval. In terms of our Sunday services, we typically have our main service starts at 11:00, and food pantry is open between noon and 1:00 p.m. So depending on the timing of that, we might be a little bit shorter, but we're certainly not looking to change on the several times a minute, or even potentially several times an hour.
I don't think anybody's going to be there with a stopwatch to make sure it's an hour. It's just an indication of the impact of the board and you bringing the food.
Certainly.
All right, well, I'll tell you, one of the things that I'm thinking about is tabling it to get some input from our council on this.
And maybe the church can get together and see what the number of signs at any given time and what they would actually feel comfortable with as far as the time, the intervals for changing the signs.
So, and I will share with the applicant, a concern that I have is, you know, we have a statute that, a code, that you can make a good argument, just doesn't allow this. And that's why we're here. You've presented reasons why you would like it. You know, some people here may think that you've made your case. I don't know. We haven't debated that yet. But I think the first issue that I need to clarify in my mind is whether indeed what you're proposing violates the code. And there may be an argument that it does, and therefore we can deny it, or we can put conditions on approval. So we've talked about all of that tonight, I think, and I think it would be wise for all of us, obviously including the applicant, if we were to consult with our council, and that will give you time to come back with a little bit more of a game plan, shall we say, about what your use is going to be. One of the concerns that Marie raised about aesthetics, I kind of agree with that. I think one of the reasons signs like this are not permitted, or let's say flashing signs or moving signs, is they could be distracting, but also honestly, they don't look all that good. And if these are going to start to become more the model, more the norm, then I think it's more appropriate for the legislative body to change the statute than for ZBA to sort of change the statute by granting application after application after application. So, I think you've heard me say that we're not looking for anything flashy or overly ornate here, and I'm not, it's not meant to criticism of that, I guess, might be taken that way, but as much as it could soften up the look, I think would be helpful to your application as well.
You know, to that point, and again, the appearance of something is often very subjective, but if you want to compare the signs that are currently there, you know, with the letter "I" falling off the word "institute," you know, the four-by-four posts on that wedge sign that were there, you know, this would be a dramatic improvement to the aesthetics of this property, especially considering all the recent development. You know, we'd like to bring our church in line with the, you know, the modern look that we're seeing from the new apartment complex down the road and the very, very good-looking YMCA that's across the street. So, from an aesthetics perspective, you know, a professionally built sign, you know, that's, you know, done right, I think is going to really dramatically improve the way this church was on Route 250.
If it did become a hardy, that wedge sign was allowed. If it wasn't approved, it was just installed. The sign's going to be a lot better than that. Doesn't do much for me.
Fair enough, fair enough, but you know, the point here is that we are trying to improve the look, not deconstruct it.
Yeah, and the color may be a factor, too. I don't know if you're set on red, but the one on, that I, again, I drove past it tonight on Broncroft or Atlantic, I think it was yellow, and it just was a little...
Yeah, it's more muted, but you know, you said that the display board that you have would actually do 48 different colors, and you know, that's not necessarily something that I think would fit in very well at that area.
Yeah, the idea, though, is that you could pick a color that looks the best and stick with it, and having that capability allows you to pick something that has the best aesthetic rather than being stuck with amber or red or some of the other colors that are built into those monochrome displays. So, you know, I don't think the intent is to create a gaudy look with, you know, random colors, but rather to be able to have the opportunity to choose the best color that goes with the aesthetics. Even the color of Southeast Bible Baptist Church, and unfortunately, the designer who put that chose red, but you know, it does not certainly have to be red. It's not really even the colors of the church, and we'd be open to choosing colors that you guys felt were more appropriate.
Yeah, another thing for you to work on in between meetings here.
Okay. So, to recap, then, you guys are going to consult your legal department to find out if what we're trying to do is in fact a violation of the code? And then what things, what questions did you want us, as the applicant, to be more specific on during the next meeting so we can make sure we're on the same page?
Number of messages, a max. Intervals, I think we would like you to make the intervals as long as you can while still being effective, and, you know, a non-flashy color. Anybody else?
I think, you know, going about the non-flashy colors, I could see this potentially being all white lights with just a colored message inside that, where that's just intense and in-your-face type thing, and I think, you know, we need some kind of guidance to say that is or is not what's going to happen. You know, where you could light up the whole entire board with color and have your message within that as a different color versus just red on black, or you know, how it's depicted here.
I don't think that's our intent, but I will certainly clarify that for our next meeting.
All right, anything else, board members?
No.
No.
All right, Mike, you want to make the motion? It's going to be a motion to table, so...
Yes. I'll move to table for the ability to have the council look at this and give us an opinion as to just what the statute allows us to do as a member, also give the applicant a chance to address the concerns about the intervals and the amount of...
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to table by Mike for the reasons stated, and a second by Matt. Any further discussion?
I have one, I'm sorry, I have one additional point, I'm sorry. Does this mean that we are automatically included in the next meeting, or do we have to do anything?
Well, you have to do that little homework assignment.
Right, but no other paperwork or anything like that is necessary to get into the next one, correct?
Just do it electronically.
We should mention this at 6:30.
I thought that was... Yeah, 6:30 is, you know, we won't have another public hearing. We'll just address this right when we start the meeting, so 6:30 at our March meeting, which is March, sometime in March. Okay?
All right.
We'll do that next time. Yeah, okay, well, you know, there may be some people thinking, this is a sign, why are you spending so much time on it? Well, it is a sign, but it's a different kind of sign, and it's relatively unique, so I appreciate, I appreciate the time and effort that the applicants and my fellow board members and staff are putting into this.
We didn't go down and move it to table.
Oh, I was getting to that, Mike. Do you believe that?
Sure, I do.
All right, all those in favor? All right, we'll see you next month.
Thank you, we appreciate the time.
Thank you. Next application, please, Andy.
BME Associates, 10 Lift Bridge Lane East, Fairport, New York, 14450. On behalf of Northwood Real Estate Ventures LLC, request area variances under Section 250-14.3 of the code to allow a restaurant with less parking than required under Section 250-7.7-D of the code, greater lot coverage than permitted under Section 250-5.7-D2 of the code, and less setback than required under Section 250-5.7-D3 of the code at 1838 Empire Boulevard. The properties currently are formerly owned by Tom and Mary Yu and his own general business, SBL number 093.15-1-58. This is application number 21Z-0004.
Yes, and before we begin there, Peter, I'm going to interrupt you before you even start, I just, I'm doing a poor job tonight of reminding the public of their opportunities to call in. Last application, we didn't have any phone calls, nor did we have any email responses, but before we start, if anybody wishes to comment on this application, call 340-8771 or get online at pennfield.org and file your comment that way. So, I apologize, but go ahead, Peter, if indeed you're going to start.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Peter Vars with BME Associates. With me also this evening is Matt Lester, Northwood Real Estate Ventures LLC. They are the applicant and the developer for the property that we're appearing for this evening. As Andy read into the record, we are here this evening to request three area variances for property located at 1838 Empire Boulevard. I don't know if we can bring up the site rendering. I know that was provided. If not, we can share screens so that you can see the site plan as we walk through the application this evening. through the application this evening. A little background about the property at 1838 Empire Boulevard. The property is about 7.73 acres, three quarters of an acre in size. It's near the apex of Empire Boulevard and Creek Street. It was subject of, thank you, it was subject to review and approval back in 1990 where it was approved and subsequently an M&amp;T Bank was developed on the property. That building was 3,800 square feet, provided parking for 24 cars, and actually had a three teller, drive-through teller system on the north end of the building. M&amp;T vacated that building a few years ago, so and the property has sat vacant for that time period. The, the bank use, it wasn't allowed use within the GB's zone, and it is, remains so, general business. As part of that existing development, they did have variances granted to them to allow a 60-foot setback off Empire Boulevard and a 32-foot setback off Creek Street. So the proposal for this property now is to demolish the existing building and construct a new fast casual restaurant that would be 2,350 square feet in size. The building would fit in, within the existing footprint of the current building on the property, and there would be minimal pavement reconstruction on the site. We would be removing pavement up along the north property line. As I mentioned, there's currently three lanes of drive-through up there. We'd actually be reducing that to two lanes. And we are adding some pavement along the south property line in order to provide double-loaded parking on the south side of the building. But overall, the disturbance on the property is minimal, in that we're only going to be disturbing about three tenths of an acre or about just over a third of the, the project site. The new restaurant proposed for the property will have interior seating for 45 seats. There also is an outdoor seating area located at the southwest corner of the building. You can see it on the rendering. It's the, the little blue dots there for 12 patio seating. So that's a total seating on the site or for the use, I should say, of 57 seats. We would provide two drive-through lanes as illustrated on the rendering here. The two-lane circulation is provided for, the interior lane would be to utilize the pickup window. The second lane is to provide circulation around the building and to be able to access the parking along Empire Boulevard. When we talk about drive-through here, it is important to acknowledge that this is not your traditional drive-through. It is a pickup window. There is no ordering kiosk. There is no onsite ordering. There is no pay window. This concept for the operator is that it is a mobile app approach that the customer would be ordering their food off-site, for lack of a better term, on their app or whatever. They would get a pickup time assigned to them, and then they would drive to the restaurant, enter the drive-through lane to go to the pickup window that is located along the west side of the building or the Empire Boulevard, Boulevard side of the building to pick up their order and then proceed out of the site. So one thing in laying this out to point out is we maintained the existing edge of pavement along Creek Street. Currently, the M&amp;T Bank's drive-through along Creek Street is 20 feet wide. We are proposing this at 24 feet wide, but we maintain the edge of pavement along Creek Street. We also maintain the existing edge of pavement along Empire Boulevard. So we've not pushed that pavement or, or parking out closer to either street. As I mentioned, the property was previously granted two variances for setback, one for 60 feet along Empire Boulevard, the other one for 32 feet along Creek Street. But given the fact that we are completely demolishing the M&amp;T Bank building, the building department determined, which we agree with, is that those variances no longer are applicable to the property because for the building they were granted for is being removed. So that brings us to the point of being here this evening based on this site plan to request three variances from the zoning board of appeals. And I'll briefly walk you through each variance as to the reasoning behind them. The first variance is for parking for the property. As we mentioned, the current site right now provides parking for 24 vehicles. As we mentioned, this site will provide seating for 57 seats, and maximum employee shift is, is five employees. So based on the code, that generates a required parking of 48 spaces. Through reconfiguration of the site, we are able to increase the onsite parking to 35 spaces, including two accessible spaces. So while we've increased parking by 11 spaces on the property, we are still 13 spaces short of the code requirement. However, that does not pose an issue to the operator. By, by the concept of this restaurant, they have actually reduced their in-house seating because it is primarily a business that will be driven by the pickup window, the mobile app ordering. So it does reduce the demand on parking. Excuse me. The operator, through their previous experiences with this new concept, the concept's about 12 to 18 months old, has been finding that a parking, providing parking in the 30 to 35 space realm for this size of a restaurant is satisfying their needs easily. Also, we were able to add the 11 additional spaces without any real change to the pavement. As I mentioned, we reduced the pavement up at the north side of the property and slightly increased it on the south side to double-load the parking. The, also, in justifying the need for the variance, to really increase the parking would require us to reconfigure the drive-through area, especially along Creek Street. And we just don't really find that functional for the site because of the need to, while we have cars possibly queued in the pickup aisle, we still want to be able to provide access around the building so that they can access, circulate around the building and add parking. But the fact of the matter is, is that the applicant and the operator are, are satisfied that the 35 spaces will meet their demand, given that this is really going to be a mobile order, mobile pickup-driven business. The second variance that we're applying for is for lot coverage. The current site, as we've mentioned to you, has been developed since 1990. It was developed and currently has a lot coverage of 78%. Interestingly enough, that is the same site plan that was approved by the planning board back on April 12th of 1990. So we believe the 65% code allowed maximum lot coverage may not have been in place in 1990. There's no record that they got a variance for this, but it is, the site was developed per the approved 1990 site plan. Through our redevelopment by reducing the building, but slightly increasing, increasing some of the pavement, there is a slight reduction in the lot coverage. We're reducing it to 76.8%. But even though we've slightly reduced the lot coverage, I think the key here is, is a couple of things. We were able to increase the onsite parking from the 24 spaces to the 35 spaces, but we also were able to add green space, and I think in two key areas. One is the triangular piece of green space that is located along the east side of the building or along the Creek Street side of the building that will soften that building to Creek Street. And then we also increased the green space area up at the north side of the site because we were able to remove one of the existing ATM or auto teller drive-through lanes there and thus created an area that we could landscape. And, and so while there may be a minor decrease in lot coverage, we were able to maximize, I think, its benefits to the site. As it relates to the variance request though, yes, we still need a variance, but I, the board, we would ask would recognize that this is a redevelopment project. It is a redevelopment of an existing developed property, a development that has been of this scale and scope in place for 30 years. What we're really trying to do is just reinvest in this property, maybe for lack of a, of a better term, bring it into the 21st century. So while we are requesting this variance, we don't think it's detrimental to the area, to the neighborhood, or, or, to the environment, given what the condition of the site has been for the last 30 years. And that, what I mean by condition is the development footprint. The third variance requesting is for the setbacks, the front setbacks off Empire Boulevard, off Creek Street. I've explained already why those variances are needed from one standpoint in the fact that the previous variances no longer are applicable. But we would point out that we are requesting similar variances. We are still, we are requesting that the variant, or the setback, excuse me, to Empire Boulevard would be 60 feet, which is what the current setback is. And to Creek Street, we've actually set the building back at 34 feet off Creek Street where the previous variance was for 32 feet. So we have increased that by two feet. Our reasoning for the request for this variance is, is similar to why the variance was granted in 1990. And the zoning board at that time, even in their findings noted that if you were to apply the 80-foot code-required setbacks off Empire Boulevard and Creek Street, the Board of Appeals found that no practical structure could be constructed on the property without the need for variances. So our request is to establish setbacks consistent with what currently exists on the property so that we can practically develop, redevelop the site. The one last thing we would just like to point out to the board, it's not necessarily a, a matter of application, but it is a matter of record that we wanted to point out, was back in 1990, the zoning board of appeals did issue a special permit for signage for the M&amp;T Bank. One component of that signage is they do have a pylon sign located at their Empire Boulevard entrance. It's on the north side of the entrance drive that you can see on the rendering in that island. The building department determined that that sign, as long as we did not change the dimensions, did not change the height, basically, I'm going to use the term "refaced" it, was that, that the sign could remain, could remain in use, that the permit is, remains valid. We do acknowledge that any other signage on the site, building-mounted directional signage, everything, will be subject to its own separate application to the building department, and then they would make a determination there on the next steps. The last thing I would like to say is when we did prepare our letter of intent dated January 12th to make the application, we did provide to the board written responses as it pertains to all three variance requests to the five criteria that the board needs to review in consideration of this request and the benefit being sought by the applicant weighed in relationship to the health, safety, and welfare of the community. We can discuss any of those responses this evening at the board's discretion, but we do believe those responses, I believe, lay out a, a, a pretty clear point as to why we believe these variances can be granted and should be granted to allow the redevelopment of the property without being detrimental to the surrounding area. So with that being said, myself or Matt Lester could answer any questions that the board would have at this time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Peter. Just before we start, once again, remind folks that want to call in 340-8771 or through the website at Penfield.org. Thank you for the thorough written and verbal presentation. Couple of questions. On this map that's up there, I think I understand what the traffic flow is going to be, but let me ask you, is it, is it one-way around the building?
Yes, it is, Dan. It is the same traffic flow pattern that exists today for the bank where it's one-way, I'm going to say east to west. In other words, the one-way pattern starts on the Creek Street side of the building, goes around the north side of the building, and then comes down the Empire Boulevard side of the building.
I, I do remember for the bank, when people turned in off of Empire, they could actually though turn left.
Yes, they could. Yes, they can today.
But that's not, I could, it looks like you have slanted parking spots facing Empire now, and so it's, you're definitely going to have a one-way around the building as you just described. Okay. Are you going to have any spots where people text when they get there and you guys run out and bring them the food?
I'm going to let Matt Lester answer that question because I know he's familiar with it. There is kind of like a numbering system or when they can check in, but I, I'll let Matt answer that.
Okay.
Thanks, Peter. Good evening, everyone. This will be the third location that we've developed for this operator. In their previous two, they, they do have four designated spaces for pickup. Those tend to be used for the order as well. So to answer your question, you know, the designated spaces that will be on the site, they'll all be exclusive to this operator, but there will be four signed parking spaces for pickup. And again, they seem to be used as they pull in, they type their order, and then they'll pull out and circulate the building.
Okay. And those four, those four are included with, within the 35 or?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so really for, parking for customers going to walk in and order and eat in the restaurant and for employees, you're, you're really talking about 31 spots?
Correct, yes.
Well, the, the four, the four additional will be for pickup.
Yeah.
But it's more, you know, order in advance. So.
But are they going to be specially marked? Park here for pickup or?
They probably won't because all the spaces here are exclusive to this one tenant.
Yeah.
Where they've signed and marked those spaces, it would be in a situation where they have multiple tenants on the same site, and they just need to, you know, differentiate the two spaces. So probably not here.
So you're going to allow that practice, but you're not going to have any spots marked specific?
We're not going to designate it, no.
Okay. And, and you took that into consideration when you did your analysis that led you to conclude that 35 spots is enough?
This is more than they have in the other two locations that we've previously developed for this operator.
And, and how do you gauge one of those operations against the other when you're determining how many parking spots are needed? What do you, square footage?
Square footage, yeah. We have candidate with development. We did similarly to this where we have 50 spaces for three tenants, and the other two tenants require about 20 spaces each. So this is really a non, they really embrace technology to not need much parking. It's.
Yeah, I, it's, we had an application, I don't know, before COVID, I think it was, for the McDonald's that somebody mentioned earlier, the McDonald's at 250 and 441, and they wanted to reduce parking spots, the number of parking spots to add a second drive-through. We granted it, and they were basically, I'm not going to say that they said nobody comes in the restaurant anymore, but, but fewer people do unless you want to sit there and drink coffee all day.
75 to 80%, you know, when a traditional drive-through is in place. I mean, it's, it's a different world.
Yeah. So, let me ask you about the pickup window. What process is in place to make sure that you're at the window only when your order's ready?
Yeah, so they'll send you a time. I mean, I encourage everyone if they're interested to go on their app. They have a, Chipotle has a phenomenal app where you can order in advance when they have a pickup window option. And they'll, your, your order number and name will be on the board. If it isn't, you just circulate the building. But they give you a, similar to, I don't know what a good comparison would be, Instacart or, you know, whatever else is out there these days. or, you know, whatever else is out there these days. You'll get a, you'll get a notification, your order's ready, you head to the restaurant, you queue up, you'll see your name on the board. If it's not on the board, you circulate the building, and until it is on the board, as long as people show up within the timeframe where their order's ready, or at least when they're, you know, texted, or, you know, identified that their order's ready, there won't be any issues. They seem to be widely successful across the country in locations where they've done this.
Yeah, it makes sense. The timing is an issue. Now, when you say you see your order on the board, I, what do you mean by board?
So there'll be an order board, I guess on the visual you see here, it's the third car back. There will be a board, a visual, that will identify, I'm sorry, from the window.
So it'll be the north side of the building?
Yeah, right there. So there'll be a, you know, a customer board, or a menu board, not really a menu, because it's not, it's for, you know, the.
Pickup only.
That order.
Yeah.
And it'll say, yeah, Joe Smith, order number two. They're in the queue, they circulate the building, they get to the window, I am Joe Smith, here's your, there's no transaction, there's no money exchanging hands or anything. It's all paid prior to. It's literally a pickup.
Okay. So if Joe Smith pulls up and he doesn't see his name, you're, he keeps driving, or he can go park, I suppose?
He, we have a bypass lane, he can bail out, you know, get out of the line, he can park and go in, or he could, you know, exit the site, go get a coffee, come back when his time is right.
Yeah. I'm, honestly, it sounds great, and I think it would be, but I'm just trying to, it's a little bit tight on that site, not a lot. I think, I think it's a good application, it's well-done, but I don't want to see people driving around waiting for their food, and all of a sudden, you got little fender benders in there. I don't, I don't see it, but.
The reality is, you won't go to the site until you get the text, or the notification.
Maybe. You might not have anything else to do.
Well, then you'll go get a coffee at Starbucks, or, you know, something else.
Well, that's good. Go spend more money. That's great. I'd like that idea. That's good.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. I'm satisfied with the answers. Anybody?
The only question I have, with the reduced parking, where do you put snow in the wintertime?
Yeah.
And how many spots does that take up?
So a couple, as we mentioned, a couple of places is, and probably the, the primary space is at the north end of the site, because currently that pavement is pretty close to the property line. And like I said, we've pulled that, because we eliminated a lane up there, so it actually did create a lot of space up along the north property line. And then the remaining perimeter is very similar to what's there today, so you have the green space along Creek Street. And actually, we did pick up space down, green space up in the southeast corner, because that's where the dumpster's currently located, and we moved it up to the north. So, so actually, we've actually increased the snow, the snow storage area on the site.
And as a last resort, I mean, this, this is a national company, they will load and export snow in an event where they need to.
If they need the parking, I'm sure.
It's a cost, but it is what it is.
Yeah, so, you know, we've, we've done a good job there of, we, of filling the spot at the other fast-food Mexican place, I forget, Q.
Qdoba.
Yes. Yeah. Now, that's, it's not a Mexican restaurant anymore, but it's a wellness center, or urgent, urgent care. Also, the crepes, Simply Crepes is going, where there used to be a spot there, so we have to work on former Chili's. But this is good. This is, you know, M&amp;T's been sitting there empty for a long time, and good, good proposal, I think, here. So, go ahead, Mike.
Another question on, as to how you control the amount of onsite dining? Is that just a function of the amount of parking spaces? And you said that they want to go with this concept of ordering in advance, but how do you get people to do that, rather than come on and order later?
Well, Mike, I think, I mean, I got, the world has changed. I think habits have changed to that, to the point that, it's just people's habits have changed. Even pre-COVID, you know, and by the way, you know, Dan referenced the McDonald's application of 441 and 250, that I got the resolution, that was March of 2019, so that was a whole year before COVID. And as they mentioned, you know, in, in restaurant dining is decreasing, especially for quick-service restaurants and fast casual restaurants. COVID has only accelerated that. People have developed habits now that, you know, and habits of convenience, that I think that's going to control it more than anything.
And I can tell you, from my experience as a real estate professional doing this for 20 years, you know, restaurants are going drive-through only. You'll see that more in the upcoming, I'm sure, the town of Penfield, the applications. And Instacart and Amazon delivery, that wasn't prevalent years ago. Now, you know, personally, I don't, I don't know if my wife's going to set foot in Wagon again, because we've been spoiled with the Instacart delivery. You know, that said, in the restaurant world, you know, Panera, Chipotle, Shake Shack, I may go down the list, everyone's going drive-through. It's just such a, you know, easy solution to convenience. And the dining experience with the millennials, and I don't want to get into generational millennials, it's different, you know, they, they, they're all about instant gratification, and they don't relish the dining experience the way maybe previous customers used it. So it's a trend. I guess that's the best way to put it, is a trend.
Okay. Any other board questions?
No.
All right. I don't see any, anybody in queue for the phone, or anything electronic here. I'd just say, for the record, I'd be glad to go out for a beer or dinner with any, any one of you, even the folks I just met tonight.
I'm ready.
Okay. So let's then move to seeker. I will make a motion to declare this an unlisted action and also issue a negative declaration under seeker.
I'll second it.
Okay. So I've made that motion, and Andres seconded it. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And as far as the merits of the application, I would also make a motion to approve all the requests. As you've already heard me say, I think this is a great redevelopment of the site. Everything that we've heard about the nature of these businesses, these restaurants, is I agree 100% with. Think that the applicant has done a good job of addressing the traffic flow. It's nice that this has entrances on both of the roads. Both will be used. And I, also between the written application, the presentation tonight, I think all of the factors have been met for the variance requests, so I would make a motion to approve all of the requests. Mike has seconded that. I noticed that there was a little delay there. That's good. I got a little nervous. I'm not too nervous. I think Peter was getting nervous. All right. So we have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Good luck.
Good luck.
Good job.
Yes, thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
You too. And I think that's certainly the last application, no other business to attend to. All right, folks, another great job. We will see you in March. Thank you very much.
I love Peter's presentations.
Yeah, he's pretty thorough.